Item number 10, which is, consider an act of...
Is everybody in hearing range anyway?
Yep.
Okay, number 10 is consider an act upon the draft strategic plan 2018 and 19. Scott and McLinn, Ryan, Councilmember McLinn, please share your comments on the strategic plan. This is an action item. So, go ahead.
All right, on Saturday, February 3rd, 2018, the mayor, city council, department heads, and other key staff of the City of Castle Hills met with Dr. Richard Lewis for the first strategic planning workshop for our city. Several residents were also in attendance. A work group was assigned after we finished the strategic planning day, and it comprised city manager Ryan Rapley, police chief Johnny Siemens, alderman Maretta Scott, and myself as the start of the group. Towards the end of our meetings, we did add in Chief Dover because it became apparent we needed to bring in some items from the hazard mitigation plan that council adopted last fall. So, what I have learned in training through the Texas Municipal Leagues, different classes that they offer, is that planning is important, and planning is A number one when it comes to applying for grants. It's A number one when it comes to applying for a loan or getting financing if you want something. If you don't have certain plans in place, then you might as well just not go after some of these other monetary sources. Mrs. Scott and I attended a strategic facilities planning for small cities class when we were in Fort Worth at the Texas Municipal League Annual Conference, and we learned that the CIP that the city manager Rapley has talked about is only one of six or seven or eight different plans that we actually need to have to have a full cadre of plans at our disposal. They include a parks master plan, a comprehensive plan, a strategic plan, a capital improvement plan, a drainage master plan, a facilities plan. We don't have an airport, so we didn't need that. Water, wastewater master plan, we don't really need that either. But what we realized that we had started in February was accomplishing one of those things that we needed, and that was the strategic plan. So, we sat down. Mr. Rapley brought us several examples from City of College Station and from other cities to give us a template for starting. And so, this is what, this is our proposal for the city. Council did adopt a mission statement back in February after we finished our strategic planning session, and that was adopted by council on February, what day? February 13th. At our next council meeting, we adopted a mission statement. So, the mission statement that we've adopted for the city is, "Our mission is to provide unrivaled city services that are thorough and efficient to a diverse engaged community." Well, typically, your strategic plan is not just a couple of things. We have a community vision statement, and it's tiny up here. I can send, or Ms. Thielen can send PDFs of this so that you can look at it. Citizens can have access. But we have a community vision, we have core values on page four, organizational values, and then several focuses. And the strategic planning focuses that we chose to use were all decided in that Saturday strategic planning event that was facilitated by Dr. Lewis. We focused on good governance, financial stability, core services and infrastructure, diverse and stable economy, citizen engagement and beautification, improving mobility, and having sustainable city. Well, what do all of these things mean? Each one of these is followed in the packet by a page on that particular focus. Each focus has a goal. Each focus has objectives, what it means for our citizens. If we are going to talk about good governance, what does that mean for our citizens? And most importantly, how are we going to achieve success with this? And so, each focus has action items. Mrs. Scott came up with a great plan that we should key our action items off of key components in our goal, and so, we sat and spent numerous hours in keying our action items off of what parts of the goal it achieved. And so, what we think we have come up with is a strategic plan that citizens can look at, and you can tick off what we as a city, what we as council, what we as employees, what we as a team have accomplished to reach these goals that we've set for ourselves with distinct, with succinct, specific actions which are, would follow Mr. McCormick's SMART goals that he has touted several times on Nextdoor and other places. There are action items that you can see, that you can check off. We have a key at the bottom of each page where if we're talking about transparent government, we tell you that seven of the action items go towards creating a transparent government, or eight towards inefficient governance, or eight for accountability, five for responsive, or seven for actively promoting citizen involvement. We've also gone and keyed our focuses to the hazard mitigation plan that was adopted, and this was, they're both city and county goals with that hazard mitigation plan, and those are listed on the last two pages of the strategic plan. So, it's lengthy, it's about 15 pages, but, well, 14 pages, and it's fairly thorough and covers all the different topics of the focuses.
Okay. Let's go get in motion and a second on the item, then we'll go into the discussion.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Ms. McLinn, Mr. McCormick moved. Ms. McLinn seconded. Discussion, we're gonna start on this side. Douglas?
To pass for the time being, please.
Thanks. Ms. Winger?
Yes.
Ms. McLinn, did you have anything else to say?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
I'm just really excited to finally have a strategic plan to look at. This is a draft copy to go over because, as Ms. McLinn said, we're looking at possibly grant money. I know Mr. McCormick's looking at NPO grants. We are looking at grants. One of the things they're looking for is your credibility and what kind of plans your city have in place. This is one of the items they're looking for, and we finally have one. It's just a key component of any city. It's a three, typically a three to five year plan with measurable results, and that's why we have our goals, the objectives and the actions like she explained. It also incorporates the hazard mitigation plan, which we passed back in November of last year, and that does have things that we need to do within a certain timeframe. So, that's why we went ahead and included those actions in here as well. So, I hope everyone will read it and look at it, and it offers some constructive criticism if there's anything they see on it that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Yes, I'd like to commend Ms. McLinn, Ms. Scott for a lot of hard work and a good product. I appreciate the effort. Thanks for the comment about the SMART goals. I think we're still a little bit on the vague side, but I think it's fine as it is. I'd like to offer an amendment to your proposed implementation. We approve it with the proviso that the hazard mitigation plan items pertinent to the CIP shall be coordinated and scheduled with the other CIP items. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
In other words, there are capital improvement items that we have to pay for, that should be part of our capital improvement plan. They need to be planned and coordinated with our capital improvement items.
Did you put that in, that was in the form of amendment?
I motion to amend the motion to add the language, "With the proviso that the hazard mitigation plan items pertinent to CIP shall be coordinated and scheduled with the other CIP items."
Perfect. Any second on that item, please?
I'll actually second that. I think that's great because then we can check off them as an action within our strategic plan. So, it's a win-win.
Okay, a quick discussion on that. Douglas, you have anything to say?
On the amendment?
Nope. Yes.
No, I have no discussion.
Ms. Winger? Ms. McLinn?
No.
Me neither. You? Excuse me, Ms. Scott?
No. Like I said, I think it's win-win.
Mr. McCormick, it looks like that you're, is that it?
That's all I got.
Let's take a vote, okay? All in favor?
This is for the amendment.
Amendment, yes, sir.
And then we have to vote again for the motion.
Amendment. Okay, we have four. Ms. Winger? No. Ms. Winger's no. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the original...
We have to vote again.
...motion. We've had discussion. What item?
I'd like, now, I'd like to say a few things on the discussion of the original motion.
Go ahead.
I want to commend Ms. Scott and Ms. McLinn for putting down in print, it looks like about 96% of what's here we are doing already, but it's nice that it's there. There are only one or two things that I have difficulty with, but that's not bad. I mean, it's only 4%. Be one city, one team. I don't know who, whether that, I don't know who that is pertaining to, because this city has always been, let's say, at odds with each other, half and half and half and half. Maybe you're talking about the organization of the city, or whether you're talking about the whole city. Which is it?
Well, our goal would be for all of us to work together as a team, to accomplish best practices for the city and to accomplish the objectives and actions of the strategic plan. And yes, you're right, we are doing a lot of these items already, which is great. We can check them off. We're doing them. But our purpose, like specifically, was for our city to have one because the 21st century has a strategic plan and to actually write it out. So, and you said one city, one team. Our goal is to work as a united city. The city manager, working with the department heads, working with the citizens, working with council, that we all work together to move the city forward into the 21st century.
As I say, there are only one or two things here. One thing I do have difficulty with, and it's only one item here, "The city maintains diverse sources of revenue, fine, and a comparable property tax rate for growing cities of comparable size." I have difficulty with that. The tax rate has got to be not what other people do, but what people in the city can afford to do. We can look at other cities who spend a lot less than what we spend, and they're comparable cities, and others that spend, who have greater resources than us. I think that's a difficult thing ever to implement, and I think it's something that was just difficult. There are three or four things I'm glad that are here. Annually review implementation of the strategic plan. I think that's a good idea. Conduct regular citizen surveys. Now, we've had surveys constantly, and I think we ought to continue with that. The mayor constantly puts out surveys all the time. Conduct, now, this is very important, and I'm glad you brought it in. Conduct regular internal audits of city services, practice, and programs. We should also have not just practice and programs, but what do we have in this city? I don't think we've had an audit of this city of what we physically have. I can't even remember ever having an audit of the city, what we physically have. We discovered we have things we didn't need, but I think I would just simply add, you know, add additional things to that. And I think that's very important, and I'm glad you put that in there. Let's see. As I say, overall, well, this is, on the last page, I believe fundamentally, the marketplace determines a lot of things.
Which page number is that, sir?
Eight.
Okay.
Under objectives and goals of diverse and stable economy.
Thank you.
It has, "The city has identified land available for economic development opportunities." That's the private sector that does that. We don't have any land that we own that we can develop for economic development.
That's, I don't think that's exactly what we're talking about with that. It goes to some of the discussions we've had in the master plan meetings where we've identified underutilized areas that maybe would be appropriate for having a second zoning, whether you're talking about duplexes along Jackson Keller, or whether you're talking about a one-story building at the corner of Blanco and 410 when it could be a two or three-story building. So, I don't think that, I think you can consider that in a broad sense where it's not specifically land that we own, but land in the city that we would like to find somebody to develop and bring a different, better type of revenue or more revenue to the city.
Well...
That's economic development.
That's interesting, but I don't know whether, if I was the landowner and I've suddenly been told the city wants to do something else with the land I own, I'm not really sure that'd go down too well. But I think I get the gist of what you're...
That's what happened with IKEA.
Well, that's true. I get the gist of what you're trying to do.
And the goal's not necessarily is for the city to do the project, but just be aware of what land is available, should developer approach us and say, "I want to put in a new X, Y, and Z store. It's a great franchise, great chain, good," you know, that we can direct them in certain areas that they should look. We're not saying, "Put it there, put it there," but...
Mr. Snoll, do we ever, do we run the risk if the city pointing out to the outside world, "These are the properties that we think should be developed"? Do we run the risk of other people who have properties at or around, the properties we pointing out by saying, "Why aren't you helping me"? I mean, is this the nature of the city to do something like this?
Mr. Gregory, it's difficult to see how the goals of the strategic plan could be used against the city when the goals are all to improve the quality of life and the overall performance of the city, and to give the city council and departments and the city manager guidance on what the city council has determined to be important goals for the city. Adopting a strategic plan is exactly what a council should do. It sets policy, and it directs its staff to implement the policy. I think it's speculative to determine that someone would go out and hand-target specific lots that need to be dealt with in some way or another, and that that could somehow lead to liability on the city's part.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we're back on the original motion. Ms., where are we at? Ms. Winger, did you have anything to say about the original motion? Okay? Huh? Oh, yeah, there's a couple of people signed up for this. This is item 10, right?
Mike Flynn, 111 Amerson. Here I am again. Just wanted to commend Ms. Scott and Ms. McLinn for their efforts on putting this together. I think it's a great idea. We need a strategic plan, something we needed for a long time to give us some continuity, and I fully support the effort and hope this, it'll be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Mr. Paul, you signed up for this item? All right, okay, pass. Okay, good. All right, so now, we're gonna go ahead and take a vote. Was there anybody else who wants to say anything? All right, all in favor? All opposed? Four to one passes with Ms. Winger, the nay vote. Okay, let's move on to item number 11, please. Number 11 is consider an act upon capital improvement plan, CIP, Phase 1, regarding
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just want to preface that the five-year capital improvement plan is obviously a tool to help the city forecast the timing and funding of capital projects. The plan should be reviewed and should be a part of the updated annual budget process. Projects are prioritized planned within the five years, and the proper funding is allocated annually. The CIP is built in conjunction with the budget to allocate these funds for streets and drainage. This is a rolling plan, and once the streets, which have been reclaimed and/or reconstructed, would be done at a latter year to maintain the integrity of the streets for sustainability. For instance, in back of the room, we have a map of streets that have been coded, the need from full reclamation to excellent condition. In 2014, if a CIP may or may not have been developed or initiated, some of the reclimated streets might just be doing a sealant at this point. I'd like to move into the presentation here quickly.
Go ahead.
CIP, this is the streets for Phase 1, so there'll be two elements of the final CIP, which has streets and drainage. The capital improvement plan, this is the roadmap. It provides the details on where you want to go, how we're going to get there, what resources you need, where the resources will come from, and it should cover five years. I just use an illustration here about the process for capital needs, identifying, putting it in a long-range plan, identifying those funding sources, culminating into a five-year CIP, and then on an annual basis reviewed and/or implemented based on the year. The background for the five-year CIP, the pavement condition survey was conducted in 2014. Overall condition index, OCI, developed for each street segment. City updated and managed pavement condition with Cartograph. We used RPS, one of our on-demand engineers, to help develop and house this five-year streets-only capital improvement plan. This was used based on information provided by the city for them to do this. The CIP plan will not incorporate any drainage at this point. The plan will include an inventory, the evaluation, a matrix for rehab work, cost basis, and then recommendation. The existing payment condition, OCI ratings to incorporate different pavement distresses, alligator cracking, depressions, potholes, et cetera, were all part of the valuation that was done back when the data was collected. A total of 213 different street segments were analyzed, obviously in four different kinds of conditions, being poor, fair, and very good from that standpoint. As you can see, 28%, almost 29%, streets are in very good condition, and 60 to 79% are in good condition. The matrix, yes, 36 in good category. Sorry?
Mr. Rapley, which page in the, in the...
36%. I'm using the slides here right now, but it does say it in the CIP itself, bottom of page one.
That's based on the Cartograph matrix?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, I'll continue with that later, Mayor. The decision matrix here that is used to follow the OCI rating, cost-effective repair methods, and trying to increase the pavement life. Zero, above 80 percentile, do nothing but seal coat. Conditions between 60 and 79, micro-surfing. 40 to 59 require, looking at MNO with, I mean, excuse me, maintenance operations with base repair, and then below, 39 involves full-depth reconstruction. And each one of those has the lifespan for each type of repair that is done. Based on the estimates were developed, the following, in coming together and putting this cost basis and price, RPS was using previous bid quotes, city of San Antonio standard unit pricing, text dot 12-month moving average, bids received by surrounding municipalities for similar projects, and then the breakdown of the method and costs for, costs per square foot of each one of the methods. The City of Castle Hills require a capital improvement plan, full death percussion for approximately 12%, 2.93 miles of roadway. The remainder of the roadway network will require a maintenance plan consisting of different types of surface treatments. Total cost for the roadway improvements is $14,594. Now, this is a culmination of all work that's identified for all street based on the methods, and it's broken down there being reconstruction, a percentage of almost 12% at $5 million. So, the idea here is to give you the magnitude of the need, and then also talk about what funds are available to do what work in each year. At some point, the council's gonna have to decide which financial approach they may want to take moving forward to complete the entire plan of all the street work that's needed. The City of Castle Hills' five-year projected budget for streets and maintenance through 2023 is approximately $3.2 million. Current 2019 budget that was approved, $953,000. Supplemental streets drainage, which is not a part of this plan in Phase 1, which will go to the drainage projects, and then street maintenance of 1.17 will be a part of the total street maintenance package. The difference between the total five-year cost for roadway maintenance and available funds through 2023 is approximately minus $11,342,104 needed to complete the roadway improvement plan. The idea and the recommendation is to do years one through five. What we've looked at in year one is actually addressing over 28, 29 streets that need a seal coat currently, micro-surface mill and overlay, and then since we've had on the radar the Antler project, we plugged that in because a lot or majority of that work is reconstruction work. Now, it'll be council's choice once we bring that Antler project. Once we have the interlocal with SAWs, we bring that forward. Council can piecemeal that bid and remove what streets they want to, and reprioritize other streets that may need reconstructive work. Uh-oh. I'll go quickly through this. Sorry. I don't know what happened there. Thanks, Chief. I'm on like slide eight? Years two through five, annual maintenance budget, $294,000. This is the money we forecasted, obviously, through streets maintenance, our billboard revenue, to culminate the streets' budget to do this in years two and five. This is obviously what we project in funds coming through those street and billboard money that we have coming in as revenue. We broke down two, three, four, and five each year of costs and incorporated different methods of work that can be done within those years. From that standpoint, I have gentlemen here from RPS who've helped put this plan together. They can answer any questions directly as it relates to engineering from that standpoint.
Douglas, since I wasn't at the last meeting, was there any indication on revenue as far as Northwest Military was concerned? That we should factor into this?
Tentatively, I think you could look at maybe, well, 100 at the minimum, 200 at the maximum. I'd put that the parameter per year.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, if we have to eventually tentatively forecast those dollars, we can to add to...
Probably shouldn't figure it in.
But to, again, to go back and explain and talk to Councilman Gregory about this, the numbers that were used for the condition or pavement condition were the sort of raw, harvested numbers when the streets were first evaluated around 2014, 2015. And in speaking to our engineers, it's probably good every five years to revalidate those numbers. And so, again, on an annual basis, this rolling plan, you know, you could reprioritize projects, have the numbers, again, revalidated from a pavement condition standpoint. And I think ideally, what you'd want to do here and is have this approved and provided to like a SAWs, the other, another entity, to let them know about when streets were going to be done in our community so that we're not overlapping projects and they're tearing up our new streets. So, just sort of coordination with them so they have this document.
We have a motion and a second on the table, please, we can go into discussion.
So moved. I'll second.
Okay, we have a McLinn and Scott. Okay, Mr. McCormick, your thoughts on the CIP as proposed?
Question from Mr. Gregory.
Okay.
Have you had an opportunity to look this over, and you feel comfortable with it, Mr. Gregory? There are several questions I have about this to clarify what's here, and I'm going to ask those questions tonight.
I'll defer until I hear Mr. Gregory's questions and answers.
Okay, hold on, Douglas. Ms. Scott, do you have any questions?
I was so thrilled to read this because one thing I've learned in a lot of my training is perception is reality, and the perception in Castle Hills for many, many years are our streets are horrible, our streets are bad, we have bad streets. And here we have an OCI reading that's telling us that 65.6%, more than half of our streets are in very good or good condition. And then 22.6% are fair, and 11.8% are poor. Well, that's not screaming that all of our streets are bad, that our streets are bad, our streets are bad. We have over 65% of our streets are in very good and good in condition. So I think the sky is falling on our streets can be dispelled, at least a bit, by looking at the OCI numbers for the streets. And as I looked through and read this, I just kept getting more excited by the thought that within five years, we can have all of our streets brought up to good, very good condition with a maintenance plan provided so we know when we need to seal coat them, when we need to micro-surface them, when we need to mill and overlay, and when we eventually will have to do full-depth reclamation on it and breaking that down. So as I read through this and looked at year one, year two, year three, year four, year five, and to actually have a five-year plan to get our streets finished, and now I'm not saying this lightly because 11.3 and a half, so say 11.4 million dollars is what we're lacking to get this done in five years. In reality, for a city, 11 and a half million dollars is not a lot of money for us to find through some sort of revenue sourcing, whether it's borrowing it, going out for a bond, whatever that sort of sources. So to find such a low number, when I've heard numbers on the street, 40 million, 60 million, crazy numbers that it's going to take to get our streets repaired, to find out that within five years, and 11 and a half million dollars later, we can be running on a cycle where all of our streets are good to very good and continually maintained, is just thrilling beyond words. To actually have a five-year plan in place here, this is exciting. I mean, I wish there were more people here to see this and hear this, that we actually have a five-year plan to fix our streets.
Well, one of the things I wanted to make point, too, is an appendix E, which total improvement cost. So again, that's giving you the total work needed with all methods being full reconstruction. So that's why the total price tag is at the bottom. Again, going back to year one, we plugged in the total based on the design and potential cost for Antler. So if it comes back where, again, council wants to separate those, those can reshift projects for maybe other full-depth projects that may need to be done in other parts of the community. But what, the point of giving this is, this rolling document, again, should be evaluated every year based on funds, and also gives you the conduit to say, this is what we need as a guide or a plan to potentially borrow money or means of conducting a bond in the future.
Well, all I can say, Mr. Rappley, is thank you very much. You have done something since you've been here in, what, February, March? February? No, you didn't get here in March. Between March and November, you have a five-year street plan for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. All right, let's move on down the road. And Ms. McLenn, did you have anything to say regarding this plan?
I do. I assume it just has to do with streets and that we haven't even touched alleys or anything like that. I mean, that's down the...
Well, again, the Phase Two would be the drainage component. Any CIP is different from any city. It's comprehensive. It, you know, again, San Antonio has an infrastructure plan, so it incorporates streets, drainage, alleys, sidewalks, traffic improvements. So it's a more detailed document, but again, it goes with the same method to be evaluated every year and reprioritized based on funds available.
Well, and I like that this starts at what has been sort of the rally cry for everyone, that, you know, this guy is falling regarding our streets. And so this certainly gives us the base that we can build on to create that comprehensive plan that deals with all of our infrastructure, all of our property, and all of those other items as we get into the future.
And as I mentioned, like in year one, how it's laid out in the plan, Mr. Harada brought to me the need to obviously seal coat about 28 or 29 streets, some with based on their condition being scored higher than, I believe, 72, but also those were some streets that were done, I guess we, as the city, milled and overlaid years ago, so we need to put that sealant down to maintain the integrity. So, you know, we're saving the lifespan of this street and not coming back five or six, seven years and tearing it apart once we lose or possibly lose the depth of the road.
Well, and I guess what I like about what we're looking at with a plan like this that is a rolling plan is that one of the sessions that we went up to, went to in Fort Worth was about the infrastructure crisis in America, and the way it was explained to us is that forever and ever, we have looked at infrastructure as being something that you could get to a finish line, that you could finish it. But what they tried to stress is that this is a never-ending game, that you have to figure out a way to continually address it forever. And so I like that what we're putting together is a plan that will hopefully continue to just roll down the road to where we don't ever get into a situation where we've got, where we have a crisis. I mean, what I learned is that we are a lot better off than a lot of cities are, and for that, I'm very thankful.
Again, I think this is, could be a living document, a rolling plan, obviously that we coordinate with other entities, especially SAWs who comes into our community and does this work. But this is also something we put online for residents can see not only what condition their street is in, but also see what year that their street is going to be done based on the priority of it within years one through five. So it's more of a transparent document as well for citizens to see.
Thank you, Ms. Rappley. Ms. Winger?
Yeah, well, it's a very nice idea. Unfortunately, I've been around when we made no major mistakes before because of the evaluation of the streets, which was incorrect. I do not agree with the evaluation of the streets as I see it in here because I walk these streets all the time, and these streets are not in the condition that's stated. So I have a problem with that, and I can't vote for it.
One of the things, again, is, as you know, what was done in 2014 was the cost of the city to have these streets evaluated. So again, our engineers are saying to evaluate this every five years. So if we need to revalidate these conditions, we have to and pay to have that done.
Yeah, I understand. I understand all that.
Now, this, this, this plan was done with our funds that we have in our operating budget. So again, RPS, being one of our on-demand engineers, did a similar document for another community in this region. And so I like the way it was done. We already had the numbers, the raw data numbers from four years ago, so it was on the cheaper end...
And I don't agree with them. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I know, it was on the cheaper end to put this document together.
I'm simply criticizing the work of the engineering firm because I don't agree with the evaluation. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Winger. Mr. Gregory?
I'm slow to go home because I'll be going home to an icebox, so...
Power's back on, I think.
Oh, your power's back on?
I think the power's back on. Yours came on first before mine. I don't know how that happened.
Alphabetically by street? I don't know.
Two things. The numbers we have here is 2014. The concept of how the numbers are made has got to be tweaked because I can think of quite a few streets that they may be 60 on one end and the street's falling apart at the other end, and it comes out a 50, which the street is not a 50. So I think there has to be somewhere in there an ability to section out streets of severe decline. And the only way I think you can do that is, is we have a brand-new evaluation highlighting those areas that are in severe decline, as the map in the back has been telling us for nine years now. That's one thing that has to be here. I think every five years is...
And again, I think if you, in the appendix there, it lists all the streets, it has certain length and segments, and so, again, like your, your street, Briar Cliff, it has two different ratings because as you get closer to Northwest Military, it's in better shape, and again, it's only requiring micro-surfacing. And then you get to the Banyan, Lock Hill, Selma, it's at a mill and overlay. Full depth, sorry.
Yeah, I was about to mention Banyan, which is, you might as well just get in a boat and ride down.
So there is a street, for instance, like yours, who have two different evaluations and two different means to, to do the work, to show what rehab needs to be done and what costs.
Well, one thing we've got to have in here, you have a notation of these numbers, and this, I think, is critical. All recommendations are contingent upon the engineer's site visit to confirm existing pavement. Who's the engineer?
Well, again, whoever was selected to do the project from that standpoint. I mean, if we chose RPS as engineers, they would go back out and revalidate those numbers in anticipation of the design work that's needed to, I would assume, tighten up that cost for construction. Am I correct, Luis?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think there has got to be somewhere in here a notation that nowhere a number can change without hard scientific proof on paper by the person doing the evaluation of the street. No more of this eyeball business where you go out and say, well, that looks like this and that looks like that. That should be out of the way, and that any number, if ever changed, has got to be done by the scientific method of evaluation and then brought to the council for evaluation.
And Luis can discuss that, or Jason here, who extracted those numbers from the Cartograph system to show the pure rating or condition of that street.
Do you think it is a conflict of interest for the engineer doing the street to be the engineer running the, determining the Cartograph number?
Yes, it is.
Seems to me it would be better served the city if we had an independent person running the Cartograph numbers and not the engineer on the street. How do you feel about that?
If you need an objective third party to validate that, then, I mean, that's a process that can be considered by council.
I think that, that would be, it'd be absolute, it seems to me if you...
If you have Cartograph, it worked in 2014 to give you these numbers. Now, again, in talking to Luis, you know, it should be evaluated every five years, so coming up in 2000, close to 2020, the city should probably look about, look at kind of revalidating these numbers like I mentioned before. And, go ahead, Rick. Sorry.
I appreciate what you're talking about. Just to go ahead and come back to your concern, Mr. Gregory, giving all this information to Louis and to Jason here, all this raw data coming from Cartograph, so I kind of got on top of, ahead of what's going on with Cartograph getting this information. So looking back at what they did in 2014, that system no longer exists. So now they have a higher system that can take more imaging, what they call depressioning, and also to alligator cracking, crack sealing, all this is involved, and then they can go ahead and give a more detailed OCI, so updated data. So already, I'm speaking to the engineer there. So we all know that a five-year plan, as Louis has mentioned to Mr. Rappley here, that every five years, you need to go ahead and get a new evaluation on update data so then we get our OCIs up to date. But coming back to tweaking, as you remember, the Bear County Works Director says sometimes every once in a while, because of the fact that you, Mr. Rappley's mentioning right now, there are sections. Okay, so these are segments, and once these segments are put in, then, then you get the OCI because you've got a PCI, which gives a payment condition index, but then you have the OCI, which is gives the overall condition. So some, some blocks might have three sections, some might have four, two, like yours, but then they give that OCI, but then they're giving this up. So like I said, I'm already just going ahead and getting a little ahead of it, and this way I can get this information of what it will cost for this fifth year, because I told them that the OCIs are already coming outdated, so we can get a price on that, and we'll give that, give that to Mr. Rappley and Louis here, so hopefully bring it to your attention to see if we can go ahead and go through that next process of getting those new OCIs to you all.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Mayor something, and...
Yes, sir. And to coming back to this, this is the second time, we had a meeting, Mr. Rappley and I, with Louis here, and we went to go see kind of like a draft of what he had, and looking at what he has already put up on the slides, very nice, very nice. And not to, you know, come back and brag about, you know, the five-year plan as to what we had, but a lot of this information I gave in my notes and everything, they're putting all that together, and it's making, you know, a complete outline of the CIP. As Mrs. McLenn says, Mrs. Scott, you know, you all know that this is a good idea, so we finally have something in plan. We've been having it in plan, and only now it's going to even be higher and a lot better, too, to get movement on it.
Yes, Douglas.
Mr. Mayor, I remember back in 2009, when the council was putting together the first bond, it was $12 million. That only addressed a few streets. To me, I find this an astonishing number. You're now saying that all the streets in the city can be corrected for $14 million. And go back to 2009, it was $12 million for only a tiny section of streets.
Well, hang on a minute. First of all, when you're talking about streets and everything like that, hang on. When you're talking about streets and everything like that, you're not even talking about drainage. Drainage is a huge part of this whole thing, and we agreed back during that period of time, why mess around with a street with a problem with drainage? So drainage has to go hand in hand with this, and that's why...
With those streets that it affects.
You and I were sitting on council when we were talking about the digital billboards, I know, when we're talking about the digital billboards, and, and we passed that law that said that when, whatever the, whatever it was, the percentage was, and we argued about it for about an hour on whether, what should be first, drainage or streets. So when you're talking about streets, it doesn't surprise me at $11 million. You've got tons of drainage out there that caused deterioration of the streets.
I was just going to say, the reason it's so expensive is because you were looking at so few streets to do at one time. This is economy of scale. This is, this is planning all of them. This is planning on continual maintenance over five years. The more square footage you do, the more linear feet you do, the lower your costs. So when you're looking at economy of scale, the more you do, the less it costs. So that ends up saving you money, and that's why it's also important to have a CIP because that five-year plan, you're constantly doing a lot of streets at one time. It lowers your cost. That's the economy of scale. So when you're trying to pay as you go and do two or three or four streets at a time, it's going to cost you a lot more money than if you plan out to do 20 or 30 streets at a time and you calculate out through the economy of scale, the amount of materials, the amount of labor, all of that, that's why it costs so much less. And that's what we've tried to stress in our last time this came up with council, is that when you look at the economy of scale, the more you do, the less it costs. So that's something to think about.
Well, Mrs. Scott, I remember we had this with, and found out that was not correct. The total cost went up to $2 million when we were expecting it to go down, and that was an enormous jump.
The cost was always going to go up. It was the cost per linear foot of the street was less. The cost was never going to go down. It was design the entire street so you know how much it costs to fix the entire street to get the economy a scale on the entire street versus just a couple of blocks of that street.
Okay.
One thing on this plan, there are obvious streets that are in disaster mode right now. Banyan is one of them, and Antler's there.
So is that one.
How do we, and...
Barcrest.
Well, that's a segment of it. I mean, you look at the, to one end is a 60, and the middle is about a zero, but regardless of that street, what do you do when you have an entire street that you either lose the whole street entirely, or you wait for a year? an entire street that you either lose the whole street entirely, or you wait for years to get around to it? And Banyan is an example of that's a dead street. That should be the first street we should fix. And that was 1.2 1.2 million dollars for one street. Now, that also had drainage.
Again, I mean, that project, as we discussed a couple of council meetings ago, was not only the necessary street work, but drainage improvement. So that would be something that would be identified in the drainage to coordinate the street and necessary drainage work on Banyan, for instance. So again, again, you having this Phase One for streets, Phase Two would be the drainage. And after tonight, Phase Three may be, as Mr. McCormick mentioned, you know, the the needs to address the hazard mitigation from that standpoint, which some of those may address within the drainage from that standpoint. But I would assume in coordinating both streets and drainage work on that identified street would be identified in both Phase One and Phase Two and prioritized appropriately to address both drainage and streets.
What do you have, what do you have in a situation where a street is fairly bad, but the drainage is impossible? So a street can be fixed for 15, $15,000. But if you add drainage, it's $50,000. Do you go simply by this OCI number for that street excluding whatever it costs to do drainage? Or do you incorporate both for a total cost?
I'm Councilman, I'm not an engineer, so I'd have to.
Well, I do.
Miss.
Thank you.
I would.
I'm sorry. I'm just trying to make this comment because.
Trying to answer for about the past 10 minutes.
Because I wanted to make a clarify statement that Mr. Gregory said. He said, the first street needs to be done is Banyan. Well, I strongly disagree with that, because that would be throwing good money after bad. They'll be trying to make a silk purse out of a sow's ear. You've got water that's continually pouring down on Banyan. If you completely re-deeped Acclimate Banyan today, you go in, you tear it all out, you put in a brand-new street, you still got all that water coming down Carrollwood, it's coming down Gardenview, it's coming down the alleyways, and it's going to eat up and tear up that brand-new street that you just replaced on Banyan. So replacing Banyan first is not the way to go. Not until you have addressed the upstream water issue and the actual drainage issue at the end of Banyan. Once you get those two items fixed, then Banyan goes in the cycle to be actually repaired. But if you repair Banyan without a plan to keep it from getting destroyed again because of what's happening upstream and the drainage downstream, you're just throwing good money after bad. That's why you've got to have engineers that look at it in a thoughtful way and prioritize how you do it. Banyan may need to be pushed to another time. Yes, it is bad. I live over there. I drive on Banyan every single day. I know how bad it is. It's going to continue to get worse. But going in and fixing it completely first, right off the bat, is going to just cause us to spend more money in the long run, because while we're fixing other things, it's just going to continue to be destroyed.
Folks.
Again, again, the the way it's outlined right now, years one through five, is the available funds we have now and future funds we'll get from the streets and drainage. So again, the idea in this first year, that's the intent here, is to get this first year approved, because we want to move forward with Seal Coat. We want to, I mean, sealed bids, so we can start the Seal Coat process for these 28 streets, and move forward with Antler, the entire project, which requires some reconstruction. That's the way it's itemized and costed into this first plan, first-year plan. So again, y'all as council can take from that bid that comes in on Antler, and if wanted, if you want, re-appropriate some of those funds to address other areas that need full depth instead of Antler. But again, that's what's identified as a need in this first year based on funds. And because Antler, as a project as a whole, was already in the pipeline, it's been designed, that's why we plugged it into year one.
All right, folks. You know, we could go on all night talking about this, but we have the basics as far as the plan is concerned. Personally, I think we have enough to vote on. If you still want to go forward, go ahead, but.
Motion to amend.
I'm sorry.
Motion to amend.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to amend the the proposed recommendation, just to read. The council approves the five-year capital improvement plan, parentheses, CIP dash Phase One dash Streets, subject to funding availability and coordination with the drainage CIP plan.
Okay. Mr. McCormick has has placed an amendment on the original motion. Do I have a second on that amendment?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. And so.
So for instance, Mr. McCormick, how does that affect the first year in doing the the seal bids for the Seal Coat for the 28 streets?
I don't know. CIP plans is where that that gets gets worked out. And that's your job.
Well, I understand. But, you know, moving forward right, yeah. You know, moving forward right now, because we want to be able to to move forward on those Seal Coats. So so that's why I'm saying from an implementation standpoint.
I don't think it has any impact on what you're doing unless you look at it and your CIP guys look at it and say it doesn't need to be done here, it needs to be done someplace else.
Well, I appreciate that, because the next step would be to bring forward the the sealed bids for those streets.
Yeah, I guess I'll call for the vote on the motion.
The motion is on the table with a second. Do you feel like it can meet that?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, let's take a cautiously asked for discussion.
I called for the vote.
Thank you. Vote's been called for, sorry.
Just on the amendment.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment to Mr. We have a three. And what about you? Four, five? We have a unanimous vote. Okay, so we're going back to the original. Sure where we're at.
Mayor, you're going back to the to the original motion as amended by the additional language Mr. McCormick had in his amendment. So now the appropriate thing is to present the motion as amended for final adoption.
Okay, which is consider an act upon the capital improvement plan, CIP Phase One, regarding streets with the amendment that Mr. McCormick so graciously did and passed.
Do I need to restate the the original motion with the amendment?
Sure.
Okay. The council approves the five-year capital improvement plan, parentheses, CIP dash Phase One dash Streets, subject to funding availability and coordination with the drainage CIP plan.
I like that. Okay, we have a, excuse me. We've already discussed it to death. So let's go ahead and call for the vote, which Mr. McCormick did, I believe. Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Three to two. Thank you, passes. Now, let's move on to item number 12, Consider an Act Upon Ordinance Number 21081113D, amending the the 2018 General Operating Budget and Reimbursement, number 12. Consider an act upon the ordinance number 21081113D, amending the 2018 budget, general operating budget, and reimburse the city of San Antonio for San Antonio Fire Department expenditures per the ACOG mutual aid agreement in relation to the 2014 Wedgewood Fire. Mr. Rapley?
I'd like to speak on this first, on a history.
I don't see why not. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This is actually something that we dealt with after the Wedgewood Fire. And it was a claim Diane filed that was Chief Hood on it. And what it involved was there are uniforms that had been affected by asbestos. The claim was turned over to TML. And what TML said they were going to do is they were going to go in and make the claim against the Wedgewood, because they were the ones who had the asbestos. And if they could not claim it from them, and they could not settle a was with the San Antonio Fire Department, then it was on our insurance, and they were supposed to pay for it. So I have no idea what this is doing here now.
Well, it's here now because it's, Mr. Rapley, go ahead.
Mayor, I'm not sure about a claim. I mean, I can talk to staff about the history of that. But again, in the backup, this is what I received from Chief Hood and from the San Antonio Fire Department, again, trying to re-engage the city in reimbursement of these material and supplies. I called Assistant Fire Chief to ask and inquire if we could have the asbestos removed. And they said all of the items highest cost are related to the mutual aid agreement. And at that point, I I pass it on to our city attorney to review and validate the the reimbursement based on our mutual aid under ACOG. This is all information I received, you know, towards the end of September, early October, from San Antonio, which included the correspondence and the invoice. So I'm bringing this to you all, because, again, this has been brought to my attention.
And we're covered by insurance.
Let's let's go ahead and get a motion and a second on the table so we can get into discussion. Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have Skip and Moretta. Okay. I guess we're going to have to talk this one out, because all I see is a folder full of letters that were received by the city, returned, requested, and no, no answer. That's not one letter, two letter, three letter, four letter. It's a number of letters that we, as a city, failed. If if we did insurance claims, I would think that someone at that time, no matter who it was, not calling any names, but would have answered those letters and said, hey, it's an insurance claim, and this is what we're going to do, rather than not do it.
Well, that's what we did. We talked about it at the time, and that's what was done.
I'd like to see the letters that we answered.
We got it. It's all in the files that they've now relocated finally. So I don't know what the problem is.
Huh.
Mr. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Rapley, is this money demanded by San Antonio due at any specific time, or can it be done by the end of the year?
There is no timetable, Councilman. Again, I spoke to them and let them know that I have to bring this in front of council, again, for potential approval and reimbursement of the current operating budget. So.
Well, if there is a question.
It's my job to bring it forward for y'all's attention and review. Again, we're talking to Mr. Schnau. I had was not here five years ago, four years ago. And we'd have to research any TML claims. It might have been made at that standpoint. But we could not find any before I put this item on the agenda for y'all's review.
If there is even the remote possibility that insurance can cover this, I would like to check that out. And if we find out by next month it doesn't, we probably pay the bill. But I, since there is absolutely no time deadline to pay the bill, I'd like to go and try to find out whether or not this was submitted for insurance purposes. And the result, bring that back, among other things, to the council. And if it requires us to pay the bill in December, pay the bill. But if they don't require the money right now, I don't see what another month would do to harm anybody. They've waited this long, they might wait one more month.
So we got tabled until the next, yes, sir?
I was going to ask, do we do we know for sure whether we've made application for the insurance? I have no idea. I have no idea. Well, I'd say my comment would be that if we have not yet asked, five years later, that the answer is pretty good that the policy includes a waiver of any claim that's that's passed over a year or two years, is that's a pretty common provision in insurance policies.
But it was turned over. That's exactly my question. Is there a statute of limitation on filing an insurance claim? Is there a statute of limitation?
It should be in the files.
But the the other issue that I have with the claim is that I don't understand the the cost that's associated with the asbestos remediation gear. I said, Chief, I was going to ask you if these people are asking for payment for a whole bunker set or part of a bunker set or what?
It's it's my understanding that after the fire, they had to have their gear specially cleaned. There was concern with the asbestos. If I remember correctly, and I don't quote me on this, because at the time, I wasn't exactly in the position to be in the middle of everything like I am now. I believe they initially came with a greater number, and it was negotiated down to this number. Unfortunately, I can't speak to what Ms. Winger says if it was turned into TML or anything of that nature. At the time, I had very little knowledge of it. I was just a line officer then. I wasn't, I guess, you know, higher high up enough in the food chain to to be privileged to what was going on. I did contact Chief Friedel and tried to see if he remembered anything that was happened, you know, how it was addressed. He did state that he brought it to the city manager's attention at that time. Everything was turned over to Ms. File. And after that, he doesn't know what was.
He met with Chief Hood also. He doesn't remember that?
No, no, ma'am.
Have to talk.
Ms. McLean?
Councilman McCormick, the itemized is in the invoice here that gives a quantity, the hoods, suspenders, gloves. It gives a break on the costs.
Yeah, I want it gives prices for for 12 suspenders, it's 300 bucks. Pretty expensive suspenders. My point is that I've looked up the cost of asbestos remediation gear just for that purpose. And you can get a pretty decent set of gear for around 500, 600 bucks designed just for for asbestos.
I believe this was the firefighting gear that the firefighters wore.
Well, that was my question. What gear is this?
So this would be what we call our turnout gear or bunker bunker gear.
Okay. And this is just for cleaning?
From my understanding, yes, sir.
That's about half the price of a bunker set.
Essentially, yes, sir.
Chief, if I remember correctly, last year, just right after the election, it was sometime in June or July when we had to reconsider some of our mutual aid agreements with, I don't remember if it was Balcony Heights or wherever. But I do remember reading in our agreements that we that we do expressly mutually against each other agree that we will reimburse the other jurisdiction for any expenses that they incurred for coming to help us. We're not allowed to go and charge them for the time, for the man-hours, or for the use of the equipment. But we are allowed to go back against the other jurisdiction and actually charge them for any expenses we incur. So I don't even see how this would possibly be an insurance claim when it's an agreed expense that we've we've agreed to in our mutual aid agreements.
Let's go back to that insurance claim. Where where is this paperwork?
Well, can Chief?
From all the research.
Let Ms. McLean finish her thought there, then we'll go on to the other question.
From everything that I was able to research, and as soon as we received this current notification from the city of San Antonio, Mr. Rapley brought it to my attention. I immediately got on the phone with Chief Friedel, attempted to contact to see what had happened, where we were at, then began researching on my own our mutual aid agreements. I had a pretty outdated mutual aid agreement in my office. I was able to come over here. We had a more current one, which is actually the ACOG agreement, which is our most current local agreement with the departments that we don't have automatic aid with. Automatic aid would be the cities such as Balcony Heights, Leon Valley, Chavino Park, and Hollywood Park. In the event that there's an event like this, and there's damages or or costs that are accrued, we are responsible by contract to do that.
Do we get recovery? Hang on. Do we get recovery from our insurance company after we pay? Or or how does that go? How does that work?
I that I do not know.
Mrs. McLean, is it your contention that this would not be an insurance question?
Well, I mean, what I remember from the agreement that we were asked to look at, I read through it detail by detail. And what struck me is that it seemed fair that if you were going to assist another jurisdiction with a fire, and you incurred expenses, whether it was for gauze pads or whatever it was, that you would be allowed to go back and say, I need $2.50 for gauze pads, or whatever it was. This obviously was more expensive than that. But it didn't, it seemed like it's an operating expense. It's the cost of doing business when you have have a catastrophe. It just, it seemed to me that it was would fall under that same category.
Well, if it's the cost of doing business, this wouldn't be an insurance question. And if it's not an insurance question, the bill should be paid. All due respect, but we still need to know what the insurance we have with TML covers with respect to events of this kind. And right now, we don't have the answer to that. And that's what we need to do, is go look and see what the insurance covers, and then see if we actually made a report of a claim anywhere along the way. So we need that information before we can do much else.
Ms. Winger?
Well, I agree. And all I wanted to add is, you fought in that fire, I take it.
That's correct, ma'am.
Do you remember how many other departments were fighting that fire?
San Antonio pulled the equivalent of four alarms on it. We had everybody from our normal mutual aid companies, Balcony Heights, Leon Valley, Chavino Park, Bear Bull Verdy. Chavino Park, Bearable Verde, Alamo Heights-
And yet, nobody else's uniforms were damaged.
Not to my knowledge.
You know. Anyway, the point is, it was turned over to the, to TML. They agreed to handle it.
I could, I could offer my opinion on why San Antonio brought this forward. They've been one of the leading departments in the fight against firefighter cancer. They've been instrumental on a national effort to change the way we do a lot of the, the way we clean our gear, how often we clean it, and I'm sure that's a lot of the reason why this was brought forth by them.
Well, and I'm not doubting it. I don't think they're trying to stick us with anything. I'm simply saying it was TML's job to take care of it.
I understand. I just don't know at that time if it was addressed by them.
Based on what Mr. McCormick just said, it's gonna be real easy to find out whether or not we did a claim or not.
Absolutely.
Okay? And it's gonna be real simple. You just call them up and find out. I mean-
And find out what's covered.
And I have one more question that I wouldn't, I would really like Mr. Rappley to find out because in here, in the letter, it states that they are, could possibly report us delinquent debt to the credit bureau. Could you find out if they did that, if we were actually reported for delinquent debt to the credit bureau? Because in my recent grant writing classes and preparing to start writing some grants, if we were reported to the credit bureau and it's delinquent debt, it counts against our credibility on grant writing. So I really need to find out that if we have delinquent debt or we've been reported to the credit bureau, that's gonna affect other projects I'm currently working on. So could you please find out if they reported us for delinquent debt?
Okay, so we're-
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to pull this item until next month, date certain, and have the concerns addressed by Mr. McCormick be brought back with answers by the city manager at that time.
Okay. We have a motion on the table to, motion be brought back. I'm assuming that's table till the next meeting. Is that correct?
With the answers to the concerns of Mr.-
With the answer to the concerns of the council as stated.
All right, may you, Mr. Rappley?
Yes, Councilman. We'll verify and then check history.
I'll second it.
We got Mr. McCormick to second it. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much, council. Okay, we're gonna move on to the next item as we trudge through the... All right, I give up. Now, this is... Okay, here we go. It's item 13. Item 13 is consider an act upon instruct city secretary to use only surnames for council members on council minutes except in quorum box. And on agendas to identify submissions in parentheses following agenda items. Residents addressing city council should be identified only by name and address. Is this, is this, go ahead, Ms. Winger.
I, this is, I submitted this because that will shorten the minutes so we don't have to keep referring to people and titles. We already have said at the beginning, there's a quorum box. Everybody's there. Everybody knows who we are. Nobody on this council has the same name, so if we just use the surnames, it's very common to do, and not use titles for anybody else unless there's some reason. If somebody's, you know, specific with some title like an ambassador or something addressing us, other than that, we don't have to keep saying resident, former council person. We, you know, we don't need any of those titles. We just need to use the surnames.
Mayor, may I?
Well, let's get a motion on the table and a second and go into discussion.
Well, I don't think we need a motion. I think this is taking the city manager's job away from him. It's his job to set the protocol for how the minutes are set up.
Really?
Why is this even on the agenda?
Mark? Should this be on the agenda?
Mayor, it's on the agenda because a council member requested it be put on the agenda.
Okay.
That's why it's here, and it can be discussed by the council. If a council member doesn't think it's appropriate because it interferes with the city manager's role to supervise employees and to determine how minutes are determined, then the motion should be, the, a motion should be either no motion made, or if a motion is made to adopt this, that should be debated and voted against.
There you go.
It's on the agenda. Unless the person who put it on the agenda is willing to pull it, it needs to be discussed and acted on.
May I have a motion, please, to move this forward or whatever?
Don't move.
Okay, do I have a second to Ms. Winger's motion?
Second.
So we have a motion and we have a second. Okay, let's go ahead and move forward. Mr. McCormick, you want to start off with this? And, you know, it's a quarter to 12, and so go ahead.
I think it's appropriate to simplify the job as much as you can, as often as you can, and this seems to simplify the job. I recognize the concern that it may take away from, from Mr. Rappley's freedom of exercise of his authority. On the other hand, there's the argument that the council should be responsible for the style and preparation of its own minutes up to reasonable limits. So I think there's, there's a reasonable argument that it could be, it could be a...
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
Well, thinking in my view, I think by putting this on the agenda in the first place, it diminishes the city manager's position of having the minutes formatted in whatever format he tells the city secretary to format them. I'm all for making things easier and quicker. God forbid tonight, that would have been nice. If it decides to stay on here, I have one amendment I would make to it, but I don't even think it should be on here.
Okay. Ms. McLenn?
I agree with Mrs. Scott regarding this item, and I'm curious why we're even debating how the minutes should be written since we've hired a professional to deal with these things for us, and I too have one issue with it if this goes farther.
Okay. Ms. Winger?
The reason it's on here is that Mr. Schnall said that we couldn't change anything unless we voted for it, and as Mr. McCormick points out, they are the council's minutes. So that's why it's on.
Thank you. Mr. Gregory?
No comment, Mr. Mayor. I move for a vote.
Okay. What'd you say?
No comment. I move for a vote.
Okay. All right. We have the item on the table, and the vote has been called for. So with that said, all in favor of this as presented? All opposed? Three to two carries. Thanks. Let's move on. All right, we're going on to the next item, which if I can find it, I don't know what happened up here. Jesus, man. Lost it. Oh, here we go. Here we go. Consider an act upon proposed ordinance number 2018-1113E approving the recommendation of the ad hoc MPO-RFP Projects Committee to establish a Parks Commission and for project committee members to appoint to serve as the Parks Commission. Mr. McCormick?
Yes, the, the Parks issue was brought before the Projects Committee by Tanya Garza. A lot of research was done by Bernard Uttermeyer, and in fact, he's done everything that we need to do to have our first Sparks Park, except for us to take credit for it. So the, the way we do that is we establish the Parks Commission and eventually enter a memorandum of understanding with Northeast School District. Mr. Uttermeyer has already set up, and we had, a meeting with Mr. Clary of the Northeast School District, and the Sparks Park arrangement will be coming in place with Castle Hills Elementary sometime during the next year. And so that makes it available to, for public use. We're looking at another park down on the, on the south end at Jackson Keller Elementary School, which will require some additional work.
Thank you. Let's get a motion and a second on the table.
I'll move.
Okay. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, Douglas, thank you. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make an amendment to the ordinance that's proposed.
You're entitled to do that.
Actually, it involves a couple of things. One, we don't have a public park. It's my understanding that the Commons has never been designated as a park.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It's my understanding that the Commons has never been designated as a park, that there was some discussion that the city couldn't do anything with the property if it was called a park, so it's the Commons, it's just a piece of property. It's not actually a park. And so we don't really have a park, but we do have other land. We own the lot on Persimmon. We own a lot on Roundup, and we own a lot down in the Southern Cone of Gladiola. Right there behind the duplexes. So we do own a few other pieces of property. So there are a few, and it's just procedural because I want to make sure that the ordinance says what we have and not something that's wrong. We don't have a park. We do have other land. And I would ask that, since this is supposed to be a Parks Commission, that we have no members of council serving on it, that, so that it would just be the other members that were on the Parks, the Projects Committee, they would bring it forward and have no one on council, so I would remove Mr. McCormick from the commission and make those other changes to that second whereas.
In the form of a motion, please?
Okay. So I move that we amend the ordinance number 218-11-13-E to modify the second whereas paragraph to take out the only one public park. So it reads presently, the city of Castle Hills has the Commons next to City Hall, and we'd take out no because we do have other land, which could be dedicated as parks.
Ms. McLenn has proposed an amendment to the original on the table, the, as read?
And then the second part of that amendment would be to remove the one council member that's listed in section two on the second page of the ordinance, removing Clyde R. McCormick from the members that would be appointed to the commission.
We... Ms. McLenn has, has put an amendment to the original item. And do I have a second for that amendment? Okay. Ms. Scott, all in favor?
Discussion.
A discuss.
Okay, go ahead.
I remember that very clearly, and we were very careful not to call the Commons a park.
Yep.
And there were reasons. If we have accurate minutes, I think we should go back and talk to them. As I understand, the correction here is, you would say presently, the city of Castle Hills has the Commons next to City Hall, and no other land or funding which could be dedicated to parks. Well, I, I think there are.
We do have others, so I was proposing to take out the no and that we're funding because we do have other lands.
Yes, we do have two other vacant lots. And those, that's, that I think should be, they're small, but they would be very good little green spaces within the neighborhoods. And so I would just simply change the whereas number two, presently, the city of Castle Hills has the Commons next to City Hall, period. And then say, and whereas, so on and so forth.
The reason we did that at the time is because if we listed it as a park, we had to let the public in. That means the public anywhere, from anywhere.
Well, that's a problem with those other lots as well, isn't it? So it's not a very good idea, and the thing that they're talking about is something entirely different.
But factually, that, that paragraph is incorrect. We don't have a park and we do have other lands, so factually, we are lying on the face of our ordinance.
May I address the language? Clarify this up, please?
Yes, sir.
Okay. To modify the second whereas paragraph to read presently, comma, the city of Castle Hills has only the Commons next to City Hall, period. There are no other lands or funding which could, there are other land or funding which could be dedicated to parks. Not quite correct because I put a period in there, and usually in a whereas paragraph, you only have one thought, but we'll break it up into two thoughts if Mr. Schnall will agree.
Mr. McCormick, I think I proposed basically the same thing but left it as one thought. You want me to read it again, what I had proposed? I had proposed having it read, whereas presently, comma, the city of Castle Hills has the Commons next to City Hall and other land, I took out funding, which could be dedicated to parks. I mean, where, it already says, basically, everything else.
I buy that, but I have another, another...
And then my other amendment was to take the council member off the committee.
I, I think it's unnecessary to take the council member off because I don't believe there's any law that requires that one way or the other, and the recommendation made by the Parks Commission was that all of us be on it. That was voted for and passed unanimously and twice by the, by the, by the MPO Projects Committee. However, the name John T. Squires need to be modified to take the S off the end of it in the last paragraph.
You know, I, I just object. If we had a problem with calling the Commons a park because everybody could use it, try to imagine the other two very small lots, which are in between houses, and what that would do to the people who live there when suddenly you're saying, well, now the public, wherever they're from, any place in San Antonio, can come and use those little lots. If that was a problem with the Commons, it's a bigger problem with those lots, and they should not be so designated.
Just because there are other property that we could apply to parks doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna do it, and I think that there are other designations for the, for the property that, that could solve that problem. As a matter of fact, you can call something pretty much whatever you want, although, as you say, as a park-
Green space.
Everybody can get used to it.
And it's not part of the Parks Commission. That's the whole point. This is called, this is what Ms. McLenn is referring to.
Well, it's Parks and Recreation Commission, I guess, would be the, that's what the paragraph, the section is called in the code. That section of the code, yeah, section 30, I think it is, is Parks and Recreation, and the Parks Commission, I guess, would be involved with both of them.
In line with, in line with what Ms. McLenn is saying about Mr. McCormick, I object to having an ad hoc committee that has a very short lifespan, as it was created, to suddenly decide that they're going to have a longer lifespan because they're gonna transform themselves into a Parks Commission, or whatever.
We haven't decided that. That's, we're bringing that to the council to decide. We haven't decided anything.
Ms. Scott?
Actually, I wanted to say, I'm, I'm quite excited about hearing that you're bringing this up. I've been a big proponent for finally getting some parks within Castle Hills since I moved here 16 years ago. I'm very familiar with the Sparks Park program. The city was approached several years ago to do this, and it was denied. In fact, I believe the word extortion was used. So I'm actually really thrilled that it's being reconsidered. I'm very curious as to where the funding's gonna come from, so I'm really excited to see what creative ideas you come up with the funding because each Spark Park is $25,000, so $25,000 to $50,000 for the two parks.
Actually, the school system's gonna provide funding for just about the whole banana. Question will come up then.
Except for the $25,000 the city has to pay to Castle Hills. That's how it was presented to me when I looked into Spark Parks and spoke with Ms. Asham.
We spoke, we spoke with Mr. Clary, and he says they'll, they'll pay for the whole thing.
Spoke with Ms. Asham less than two weeks ago.
Well, Mr. Clary I spoke to with Bernard, was it Friday?
Bernard, do you want to come up?
Yeah, who's Mr. Clary?
He runs the Sparks Project with Northeast Independent School District.
Okay, because the principal of the school seems to be under a different...
Go ahead, Ms. Ward.
So maybe he knows more than the principal then, because the principal presented it as a $25,000 investment from, from the city. So like I said, I'm really excited about it, but I'm really curious as to where this funding's gonna come from.
Right, and so that was then, and now this is now, so.
This is now, okay.
And so he, he found some funding, and, and even with the, like, the, on the gate next to Honeysuckle?
Right.
A little entranceway, I was thinking, trying to get money for that, and he's like, no, let me try to get money for that. I think Santico's was providing money, Santico's Foundation, so he's like, let me try first and then we'll see if we need to get other funding.
I'm liking the sound of this more.
So, I mean, it's, it's, it's great, great for the community, and then it's, I don't know. What other questions did you have?
I do have a question because I too am excited about parks, and Ms. Asham did approach me about it, and from my research that I've done on the Spark Parks is that I understand it's a three-way partnership, that it's a partnership with the Sparks Program itself, so you've got that private funding, you've got a partnership with the school district, and you've got a partnership with the city, and each one of those entities has to put money into the pot. So I am, I'm cautiously optimistic-
So I am cautiously optimistic that we've got a situation where we're going to get a better, better deal than what I know this is supposed to be, because usually the city and the schools put in a quarter each, and then Spark Park puts in the other half. And so you really do get a good investment regardless. But I just, forgive me if I'm a little bit shocked that that is not, not what I'm hearing as the financing structure for it.
If there is cost to be incurred by the city, the Parks Commission will have to come back and get that approved by the city before we get any agreement on it. Mr. Rappley has said that we have funds in our current budget that might be applied in part to something like this. And the figures that Mr. Cleary was giving us were that they were going to put in an access sidewalk. They were going to put in a swing set, I believe was one of the things they mentioned, with capacity for ADA, ADA children. And so it looks like there is, it looks like a pretty good win-win. There may be some expense. If there is, it'll be negotiated. And the council will have another opportunity to hear about it and rule on it before we spend any money.
Excellent, go for it.
Just to clarify and give you an overview, I mean, Mr. Unemire spearheaded this. We had a meeting on Friday of last week already, I think it was, it seemed like a long time ago. But last Friday, Mr. McCormick and myself, Mr. Unemire, we discussed how this partnership might look. And the best way for the city was to do the sidewalk improvements, since they're doing the park aspect. And so we could phase those sidewalk projects. We could actually work an MOU, Memorant Understanding, with Northeast Independent School District and provide operating funds for the first phase, based on the money we have in our budget right now. We would do it through, like, say, an in-kind donation. They have the ability to price construction and do everything from A to Z at the Northeast Independent School District, because they have their own, you know, procurement process and contractors to be able to do that work. So for us, it's pretty simple. It's just entering an agreement, providing money for the construction of these sidewalks, which the school district will do as well, once we provide the dollars.
Mr. Mayor, what I like is that we do have two elementary schools. So it does cover both the northern part of the city and the southern part of the city. We've got Castle Hills Elementary on this side, and we've got Jackson Keller Elementary on the other side. So it really puts everyone in our city within less than a mile of a park and a walking trail. But both of the elementary schools are getting the fabulous walking trails, or walking, I mean, a track, really. So it's a really exciting opportunity to, that really dovetails with a lot of the health initiatives that San Antonio has.
And I think Mr. Cleary put it in another 2,000, so he was at eight, now he's at 10, for fitness equipment around the track too, so it's good.
So I'm curious to see how this all pans out. I'm so excited for you guys. Thank you for looking into this.
Did you want to, did you want to say something?
Well, I wanted to make another amendment.
Go ahead.
Okay. I would like to amend the motion that the Parks Commission be three members, Bernard Judemire, Tanya Garza, and Mark Sanderson, with Mr. McCormick serving as the council liaison.
Mayor, that motion is out of order until the previous amendment, which has already been made and seconded, is disposed of.
Okay.
And once that motion is disposed of, then Ms. Winger's motion could be re-saved.
I thought we already had a, I thought we already had a committee.
We haven't voted on the amendment that Ms. McGlynn had.
All right, is there anybody, anybody else wants anything before we make them vote on the amendment?
Can we get clear what the amendment is again, please?
So why don't I make two amendments? I'll make the first amendment, which I think will be simple to vote on. My first amendment will be whereas, to reword the whereas, the second whereas paragraph, to be whereas presently, the City of Castle Hills has the Commons next to City Hall, and other land which could be dedicated to parks. That's my first amendment.
Mr. Mayor, if Ms. McGlynn and Ms. Scott will withdraw the previous amendment?
I will withdraw the previous amendment.
I will withdraw.
Now, Ms. McGlynn's new motion needs a second.
Second.
Okay, we have it all in.
What is it now?
Just to revise that, first whereas.
I'm sorry?
First whereas, which reads, which will read after, as amended. Presently, the City of Castle Hills has the Commons next to City Hall, and other land which could be dedicated to parks. Semicolon, and.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second on the table.
That have to do with the members, I don't understand.
Uh, we've kind of already discussed it. So the call for the vote.
For vote.
Thank you. All in favor? All opposed?
I don't know what I'm voting on, so.
Okay, all right, well, so you'll just abstain, right?
So now I can vote my amendment?
Well, I'd like to make a second amendment. And that amendment would be to maintain the very last section, Section Two, where the current members of the Projects Committee, it would simply be to eliminate having a council member sitting on the committee, but leave it that the new Parks Commission would be John T. Squires, Mark F. Sanderson, Tanya Garza, Bernard Judemire, Jack Joyce, and Robert Riley.
Okay.
That's ridiculous.
That ought to be, I can't wait to see that. Okay, so, do I, do I have a second for Ms. McGlynn's?
Didn't I have my amendment in before that?
No, no.
Okay, all right.
She's already put it on the table, so we have a motion. Is there a second for Ms. McGlynn's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Heaven forbid we'd have discussion, but you want?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, we call for the vote. All in favor of Ms. McGlynn? All opposed? Three to two, all right. Ms. Winger?
So my amendment is for the Parks Commission to consist of Bernard Judemire, Tanya Garza, and Mark Sanderson, with Mr. McCormick serving as the council liaison.
Do you have a motion on the table, an amendment on the table by Ms. Winger? Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Sure.
I think removing Jack Joyce, considering he is an architect, and Robert Riley, who's on the Art Committee, would not be necessarily prudent, considering they do have the skill set to bring to this. So I'm just making a statement. Mr. Squire is also an engineer. So you'd be removing the engineer, the architect, and another member of the Art Committee, the actual design, go-to-design guys from your committee. So I really question removing those particular three gentlemen and leaving it up to Mr. McCormick, who is a very talented attorney, Mr. Sanderson, who I'm not exactly sure what he's employed at. I know Ms. Garza is, what does she do, Amy? She, you, no, no.
Same thing we do, volunteer mom, everything else.
And then we have our go-to guy, Mr. Judemire, who's just going to town, talking to people. So he's definitely, the marketing. But I think taking the engineering, the architects, and the designers out of the equation is going to put this project at a deficit. Thank you.
I have just one question. Mr. McCormick, who do you want on this committee? Well, I think the recommendation of the Project Committee is what I'm intending to support. I think that the members of the committee are all bright, they're all interested, they've all been active. And I think it's appropriate to put all of them on the Parks Commission. I think it doesn't hurt, you can put on as many as you want, it seems to me. Or you can stop with three, if that's what you want to do. I want whatever the chairman wants. And if you want everybody? I want everybody, sure. You'd be the acting chairman.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table with Ms. Winger's motion on the three. And you seconded it, all in favor? All opposed? Four to one, thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to vote on?
We're going to make another motion.
I got one amendment, one more amendment.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I need to change the spelling on John Squire, the name. It has no S on the end of it. Can you correct that without a motion and vote? Do I need to?
I'd like to move to table this motion, so we can take it up in December.
Isn't it?
Well, okay, so we have a, we have a motion on the table, the table. Anybody second that?
We have a reason why you wanted to wait for a month.
Yes, because there are several things that need to be worked out, and it's very late, and we're not doing a very good job.
If the only issue that I have is having a council member on the commission, if we just make Mr. McCormick the liaison to the commission, I would be fine with that, with an amendment that everyone else remains on the commission with him as a liaison.
Okay, we didn't get a second on the table, so it sounds like we're going to move forward with another amendment.
How many amendments do we have going here now? Ms. Winger has made.
She never got a second.
I made a motion to table.
No second?
Nobody seconded it.
Okay.
And so I made a motion, the only change be that you be a liaison and not actually on the commission. Everyone else remains as the committee had proposed. No, I'd eliminated him completely.
So now he's, now he's back in.
Yeah, but I'm not on as a member, I'm just on as a liaison.
And that's what Mrs. Winger had proposed.
Well, I think that's a bad idea. I think you ought to be chairman, you ought to be. Hurts my feelings. I might not want to play at all.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, I don't want to play either, so.
I've done that, hey, could you all get together on this and kind of work it out?
Let's get on with it and vote on whatever.
Yeah, let's get on with it.
Some more thought. Ridiculous to have, to have an ad hoc committee that suddenly self-appoints itself into a commission.
They haven't, we are appointing them.
They have self-appointed ourselves to anything. We've made a recommendation to the council, the council makes the decision about it.
That's my opinion.
I think it's ridiculous that we're sitting here ten minutes after twelve arguing about the fact that whether Mr. McCormick's going to be a liaison or a member.
I will remove my amendment from the table and call for the vote.
Thank you. There is no amendment on the table, somebody's going to have to make one.
I had one.
She just withdrew her amendment.
You just withdrew it.
And she called for a vote on the, on the original motion, right? Is that where you're at?
What I heard.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I believe what we're voting on is this ordinance with changes in paragraph two, which was approved. Therefore, if that is correct, I so move the vote.
That's correct, we have.
We have voted on changing paragraph two.
Right.
And that is the only thing we have agreed to change.
And that passed.
Everything else has remained the same.
That's right.
And therefore, I move to vote on the ordinance as so far amended.
All in favor? All opposed? Four to one, okay. I can argue about it, Jesus.
You see the electricity's back on, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it is.
Good.
So what is your, what is your position on that commission?
My position is simply as a member right now, because John Squire's chair, Mark Sanderson is vice chair. And the Parks Commission that we've just set up will vote for its own officers too, and we'll probably have different officers this time.
Good deal, I want to see that one. Okay, number 15. Consider and discuss advertising for the passport office. Mr. McCormick?
Okay, we had this passport office in operation for about two and a half months. As far as I know, we've had absolutely no advertising for it. There may have been something on next door, I don't know. But we talked about it in the presentation of the business plan twice. And we talked about the possibility of using the LED sign. We talked about the possibility of putting something on next door. And we've talked about the idea of putting in a press release, or at least I've talked about a press release with Mr. Rappley to the local paper and the other papers that we have that are distributed free in the local area. So I think it's appropriate that we get on with it. The problem is, right now, we have had, as of last week or so, only about $1,800 worth of passports issued, which is not enough to cover the salary of a passport officer. So we need to get on with it and see if this thing can make some money. And the only way we're going to do that is to advertise it. So that's the whole point of talking about advertising.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak to that? Because I've done some research.
I'd like to see a motion on the table first, and then a second.
Mayor, this is not an action item, no motion is in order.
Oh, boy. Okay, thank you. You must be awake.
Well, all we're talking about is utilizing the free advertising on the digital billboards, doing a press release to the papers, and putting something on next door. There's no cost.
Facebook.
There's no, there's no cost to any of those things. But the idea is that to get people thinking about it and see if some people have better ideas.
And I don't know why we have to do it.
Go ahead, Ms. McGlynn.
It's my understanding that as of last week, we had somewhere between 70 and 75 people who have come in at $35 apiece. That's about $2,500 so far, which is decent, it's not great, but it's good for just starting. And we had, the business plan included using social media as a soft opening until we got up to speed. Then the use of digital billboard space. And I believe that Ms. Thielen has been working with Clear Channel to develop an ad that we'll be running on the digital billboards at some point over the next six weeks or something, any day. Beyond that, we do, we have had information on next door. We have had, we have had information circulate through various Facebook media, which is all the free stuff. The local would be a great place to have an ad or some type of announcement about the passport office. That could be great free publicity. Beyond that, we do need to look at branding and having a logo for our city that we can use when we start doing print advertising or when we use the billboard. And so to that end, I have a call into Al Aguilar at Creative Civilization. He was one of our new businesses in Castle Hills. They are at One Castle Hills. They happen to be the ad agency that came up with Don't Mess with Texas and Go Spurs Go. And Mrs. Scott and I had a chance to meet with him at their ribbon cutting. Beyond that, the business plan talked about using Valpak. And I did, after this agenda item came out on Friday, I did send an email to them over the weekend, and I got a call from a lady. And so I have pricing information. There are 23 zones with Valpak. It's $195 per zone if you go the gusto. It's really like $4,000 if you do all of them per month, which is pretty expensive. But one zone to mail out, the little coupons that we get in the mail, is $425 for one zone. So if it was something we wanted to advertise locally, it's not a terribly expensive outlay for one or two months' worth of just sending coupons locally to start getting the name out. So I do have some pricing on that. I'm waiting for information from Ad Pages, which is another mailer that we get, to see what their pricing plans are. So I agree, we need to do some advertising.
Okay.
Anybody have any other brainstorming ideas? I like Ms. McGlynn's already done all the work.
Well, I do have one problem, though, is that the budget as of January 1st has eliminated two of our passport acceptance clerks. We will only have one remaining as of January 1st, because the assistant public works director, or the assistant public works is, or the public works assistant is one of our passport acceptance clerks. The finance assistant is one of our passport acceptance clerks. And then our third one is our head court clerk. And so we will be, we will have two of those positions gone as of January 1st, which compromises our ability to operate this income stream.
Well, actually, as of January 1st, you'll have a full-time passport clerk.
No, we didn't fund that.
I know, but that's, that's the only place that Ms. Davis can go. I have the name right?
We didn't fund it. It's not funded.
I know it's not funded, but it's up to the city manager to decide how he wants to do that and ask for funding.
I like that.
I'm dumping that on you, Mr. Rappley.
I'm putting you on the spot, Mr. Rappley.
I appreciate it, Mayor. Again, I think we've been taking the steps to push out the information that we are a passport acceptance facility. I think we can do some things to enhance that. Again, I would bring back to council, maybe next month, a more defined plan with prices and what we are doing. Like I said, we were able to put a quick illustration together to promote on the digital billboards off 410. And most of the people that walk in actually are not Castle Hills residents. They go out and see that the proximity to their work have been most of the folks that come in here on a day-to-day basis and set appointments with us. So I think what we've done so far can be increased and can be enhanced to push us as a passport acceptance facility. And I think it's roughly seventy or seventy-five passports in the last, uh, two, two and a half months.
So it's basically one a day?
Huh?
One a day.
But, um, w- w- we can beef up those promotions if you'd like, in other words.
Okay, do I have a motion on this item?
There's no action.
No motion required, Mayor, just discussion.
Why somebody put, do I have a motion on this item? Somebody messed up my cheat sheet. Okay, well then we had a great discussion, and, uh, we'll move on to item number sixteen. Discussion and possible action on proposed ordinance number two oh one eight thirteen, eleven thirteen F to amend chapter eighteen of the Castle Hills Code of Ordinance to remove the position of assistant fire chief from sections eighteen dash twenty-four and eighteen through twenty-five, and defund that position in the two thousand nineteen budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I object to consideration of the question because Mr. Gregory is not, he voted for that, or he voted, he voted against the ordinance we had before, and he's not, he cannot bring it forward.
That is incorrect, I abstain.
He did abstain, but it's a different ordinance.
Um, well, if he abstained, he can bring it forward, is that correct, Mark?
If he abstained, then I think he can bring a, bring it forward.
Right.
Um, and just because his name is on the agenda doesn't mean, just because his name happens to be on the agenda doesn't necessarily mean he will ma- making the motion.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, Douglas and Ms. Winger, you want to go ahead?
When Chief Dover gave his presentation the last time, it wasn't any discussed to the former chief, it wasn't the former chief that I knew. So, I called him, and I got some information, some very enlightening information of what's been going on. The assistant fire chief has not been filled since two thousand thirteen, this was a recommendation by city manager Rita Hoyle. It was, she said it should not be done. That was carried on in two thousand fourteen, in two thousand fifteen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty, until this year. During that period of time, five city managers did not deem it necessary to have this position filled. Almost fifteen, uh, council members had no objection to it. Uh, I think this is, and Chief Riddle said there is absolutely no immediate danger whatsoever by not filling this thing, and what's even more interesting is, after the Wedgwood fire, that would have been the ideal time to bring it up, to say that we need to fill this position, it wasn't done at that time either. I think for this year's budget, it should be unfunded. Now, when next year comes around, they may, that may be a different kettle of fish. I, if, if I had to predict next year, I would say I wouldn't fund it next year, but I would add an additional firefighter, the position of firefighter. So, I, I think this-
Twenty twenty.
In twenty twenty, this is not now, not right now, we don't need the fire chief, we haven't used the fire chief, we have-
Assistant.
Assistant fire chief, we've had Mr. Paul, and we've had Mr. Trevino, and we've had Mr. Squire, and we've a whole slew of people who, as the years came and the years went, saw no objection to not having anybody in this position. I think there's no reason to have it this year, and next year, when we revisit this in the budget, I think it can be looked at, uh, again, and I think is a better way to spend our money, and at that time, I hope we add another firefighter.
Second.
So do we have a, do we have a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, Douglas Winger, okay, good.
Can I have this? Collins, sir?
Of course, of course. Hang on, hang on.
Mr. Mayor, this is an interesting thing, I also found out about this. All this time, the, the fire chief was not the one to bring this forth to discussion, the city manager was. The city manager has told the fire chiefs, all, and all the city managers up to this time have told the fire chiefs, no, and they didn't bring it up. So, to have the fire chief now, being-
What? I, I just got a question.
Apparently, our code is so written that it is the city manager who determines whether or not this should even be brought up for discussion or not. It's an internal thing with the city manager and the fire chief. Now apparently, for many, 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 many years, all the city managers, we've had four or five, all during this period of time, said, no, we're not bringing this up for discussion.
Who said that?
Uh, that's, I think, is the way our ordinance is written, and I was surprised to find that out, I think Chief Riddle referred, mentioned that to me, and that's why they had discussions with the city, each city manager at the time. So I think it's inappropriate, for the chief has already made his position very clear, uh, which I think is unusual in, right then, that argument should be made by his department.
I think it's quite unusual that you haven't addressed anything to me, Mr. Gregory, you've addressed everything with our-
I'm talking to the mayor right now.
Yes, sir.
And that is, and I would appreciate not being interrupted, you can, when I'm finished, all you want.
Hang on just a second. Hey there, Mr. Dover, hang on, go ahead.
Uh, I think, I think this is, uh, interesting, 'cause I didn't realize this, but it is basically a city manager's decision whether, whether, when they bring forth the budget, whether to have this in the budget, all discuss-
He did bring it forth.
But it's the city manager who's supposed to bring it forth.
Well, I find this is-
It's a technicality.
This has come, this has come back, you voted for it, or you abstained.
I abstained.
You abstained, and now this has come back for the third time.
Well, this is only the second time, because the last time I abstained on it, because I wasn't really sure what was going on, after talking with Chief Riddle and getting the history of what's been going on, and we discovered that-
Mr. Mayor, may we have a recess?
I did, please do not interrupt me.
I can for a recess, it's a privileged motion.
That three members of this council had no objection last year for not funding the assistant fire chief. Fifteen city ma, fifteen city, uh, council members have not had an objection through the years, and five city managers have not had an objection. Uh, I see absolutely no reason to have this at this year, I think it should be unfunded, but next year, when the Wedgwood becomes available again, which they're supposed to be online-
Why would you have a problem with him, with them talking about it?
Because he's already talked about it.
Oh, I, I don't care if he wants to talk, all I'm saying is, the way apparently the ordinances are so structured, from what I've been told, is that the discussion is between the chief of, the fire chief and the city manager, and then the city manager brings it forth in the budget. And Mr. Rappley did bring this forth in the budget, and this was not a funded thing initially, then it suddenly became a funded thing. So, and he had the estimate of, I think, fifty-seven thousand dollars as a savings, and that's what he brought forth.
Let's take a two-minute break, and should I go to the-
Councilman, I originally did not program in this position into the proposed budget, it was later modified and added, uh, at that point.
By whom?
About two-minute break.
Why are you taking a break?
Because our council person asked for it.
Oh, I see.
There's no trash can in the front.
Oh, you're right. In the bathroom, or in the, in the ca, in the break room.
I don't know why the bar's up. I messed up last year.
The video won't play?
The video won't play?
All right, hang on, we got, we got two different ones.
Oh, the video won't play?
Okay. The bell's on, the market?
Yeah.
No, no, there's nothing about the camera.
Hey, we're coming up on two minutes, everybody. This is the last item, believe it or not.
Oh, that's true.
Do you have, uh, what item is this? I think we lost Brother Dylan.
My God.
He was s- He signed up to decide. Okay, we got everybody back here, it's been a two-minute recess. Go ahead, Mr. Dover. We have one person signed up that's here to talk about this, and then we move forward. Mr. Dover, go ahead.
To address, uh, Mr. Gregory's comments, that I don't know if it's appropriate for me to bring it before council. Um, I make the recommendation based off what I feel is best for the city and the best for the department. That's my job as the department head. Uh, I will remind Mr. Gregory that Chief Riddle did bring it up at the budget year, uh, previous to last year, so two thousand sixteen, he brought it up, we were in the community room, um, because something was going on here in the council chambers, he brought it up then, uh, Mr. Paul, yourself, and a few others were on council then. Um, if I broke the rules or did something I wasn't supposed to, then that's on me for not making it clear, uh, before I brought it in. I make the recommendation, like I said, based off of what I feel is the need for the department. Um, it bothered me to, a great deal, that you chose to go to Chief Riddle to address these concerns. Um, I've been in office about a year and a half, I've never had an email or returned phone call from you, sir. Um, I would have appreciated it, being able to address this or your concerns at, more in depth, if you had so chose to, to meet with me. I've met with Ms. Winger, I've met with, uh, Ms. McLean, Ms. Scott, I've met with Mr. McCormick, I've met with the mayor, um, I've met with Mr. Squire, I've met with, uh, Frank Paul numerous times. I understand your time is valued, valuable as is mine. Um, this was funded for last year, um, I was in the position of assistant chief last year prior to Chief Riddle, uh, retiring. Um, Chief Riddle called me immediately following your phone conversation, he did again regret, one, that he spoke with you, and two, that he ever let the position go. Why he didn't address it when he was in office and fight to have it back, I can't answer that. It wasn't my department to run then, and, uh, I will tell you that I felt that it was, there's, the need has always been there, in my opinion. Um, we stay pretty busy over there, and I know there's a lot of talk that we've lost population and we're not as, you know, don't have as many residents and this and that, but I can tell you, our call volume's gone up. Our population, our residents have aged, and we get those calls related to an aging population. Um, I don't, I don't have an answer for why the numbers go up, but our population's gone down. Um, outside of that, I, I felt I made a pretty compelling argument last time we were here. Um, it's been voted on twice, and it has passed twice. Um, I'm, I'm not sure why we're back here again. Uh, I'll remind you that the assistant chief is a firefighter, I'm a firefighter, I still fight fire if I have to.
So did Chief Riddle, as it turns out.
Yes, ma'am. And there's, there, I will not argue that, and if you go back and you reread the minutes or the tapes or whatever else, I did not say that he did not respond to calls, I said he did not respond to many, and I still stand by that statement. I don't have the numbers with me, and I'd be happy to pull them to show you what I've done in a year and a half compared to what he did in the last five years. I don't, I don't understand, um, I'm your subject matter, matter expert, you hired me as the fire chief, um, you don't address, I don't know that you've ever called Chief Davis to find out why the police department isn't doing something the way Chief Seaman should be doing it. Um, it was very disrespectful and, um, it angered me a great deal.
You suggested it.
I said you could, you're right, and so that's on me again then, Ms. Winger.
Chief, chief, to, to echo some of Chief's points, again, uh, I can understand calling and finding out a historical context, but again, you know, Fire Chief Dover is, you know, running the operations now, uh, from that standpoint, and-
Nobody's disputing that, that's not the issue.
Riddle may have wanted to do this, but it has no relevance on current operations right now. He is the fire chief, he is the one overseeing this department, and so, again, he's speaking from that matter.
I can tell you that Chief Riddle and I spoke for quite a bit of time after you guys got off the phone. He regrets, his words, not mine, returning the phone call.
He regrets what?
Returning your phone call, talking to you, ma'am.
Well-
You know, again, it-
I, I just, I, I don't know what to say.
One thing about the assistant fire chief position, the reason that was brought back, according to Chief Riddle, and I remember the conversations well, it was a temporary position to allow the person who they expected to be the next chief to have a transitional period, and the transitional period would be a temporary position as assistant, he expected it to go away once and if you were made chief. That was what he said then, and it, there's no changing, that's why it was there. It made good sense to have that position for a transitional period, and then you were made chief, and it was gone. I do not, I do not believe that it makes sense to dismiss everything that went prior before simply as an irrelevancy. I think it is very relevant, especially in lieu of the fact we had the Wedgwood fire. And because of that, I want, do not want to, I want to, I would like to increase the number of designated slots that we have designated as firefighter. One next year, but not now, and the reason I think that would make sense, and it may be debatable, is because by two thousand twenty-one, the Wedgwood should have a large number of people back in it, and I think it is much more desirable to have somebody who is designated a firefighter to help the city just in case. I understand everybody in the department fights fires, or can fight fires, or has fought fires, but, uh, I believe that there is such a long history of council members and, uh, city managers who did not feel that this position needed to be filled, and it wasn't for years. There was no imminent danger, obviously there hasn't been, and using Chief Riddle's exact words, and, uh-
It was the question that you posed to him.
He answered very clearly, no imminent danger. Now-
Fair enough.
I think that, that is probably confirms why we did not do anything after the Wedgwood, 'cause everything was laid bare after the Wedgwood, and it just strikes me that, uh, the assistant fire chief's position is some, it, well, I'm not, I won't say that, I just think it should be eliminated right, well, eliminated right now, defunded at the very least, and next year, we can look at it again to see whether or not it's required to-
You've already said it won't go forward.
Well, that's next year, I, I'd rather have an additional firefighter than an assistant fire chief.
One thing that I'd like to reiterate is, it, it does me no good to wait till next year to get another firefighter when we are short-staffed many days right now, and, uh, as I tried to express last meeting, the assistant chief rides in that position and makes up for the, that shortage when we are short-staffed, um, and then he acts as a firefighter. The fact that he's the assistant chief is a, is a bonus, really, but he acts in that and performs in that function, uh, just like Captain Zuniga fills in on the street as needed, Lieutenant Wagner fills in on the street as needed when the police are shorthanded.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a few points, if I may, may I have the floor?
Say that again?
I would like to have the floor, please, to make a few comments.
Well, hang on just a-
To make a few comments.
Hang, hang on just a second, wait. Uh, are you through, Douglas? Go ahead.
First, I regret that I didn't catch this last year in my first budget cycle, but I did this year. In our code, section eighteen dash twenty-four, regular firefighter positions, says, "The fire department shall consist of at least twenty regular or full, fully paid positions. The city council may create additional positions by ordinance at any time. One of such positions shall be that of the fire chief and one that of the assist- One of such positions shall be that of the Fire Chief and one that of the Assistant Fire Chief." The code was written in nineteen eighty-two. It was amended in nineteen ninety-five. It hasn't been touched since then. I brought this up. This wasn't Chief Dover. This was me telling council we weren't following our own ordinances. Bringing this up for a third time goes to the credibility Mrs. Scott was talking about earlier. When we fill when we file applications for grants and other funding, we create instability and erode our credibility with everyone every time we bring something up for a third time going, nope, psych, we gave it to you twice. We're going to take it back now. This is ridiculous that this council cannot stand by its decisions and let our department heads run their departments.
And you were the one who said that the reason it had to be in there was because the ordinance says so. And ordinances are changed all the time. That's what elections are all about.
Mayor?
Yes.
The reason I said that it needs to be there is the National Fire Safety Association recommends that a fire department of our size have an Assistant Fire Chief. We do not need another firefighter up. We do not need another, and I'm going to say, regular firefighter to fill in because, as I have stated many times before, they work twenty-four-hour shifts. The only person over there working administration and administrative duties is our chief. He's the only one there eight to five to handle everything that needs to happen during business hours. He needs backup. The backup is the Assistant Chief. Who are we as council members who are not trained in fire prevention, firefighting, rescues, motor vehicle accidents, to say that an agency that's over a hundred years old, that tracks fires, that tracks the way they work, that tracks best practices that we know more than they do on what is recommended for a city our size? That is where the ordinance came from when it was originally drafted. It's stayed there. It's been there. My bad. I didn't count catch it last budget cycle. It was my first budget cycle, and I didn't catch it. And I apologize to you, Chief, for not catching it last year. I should have caught it this year. I kept bringing it up to Mr. Rapley. I brought it up at almost every single budget meeting. You can go watch the tapes. I kept telling him, Mr. Rapley, please put this in, fund it, figure out a way to fund it. We need an Assistant Chief because that's best practices for our fire department, our size and our type. It's been voted on twice before. It's passed twice before. To bring it back a third time is just insulting to everyone up here that we're going to keep changing our mind. We're going to keep changing our mind. And I will reiterate what Ms. McLean said. I have been taking I've taken two-day grant two-day grant writing class on learning how to write grants. I've taken another half a day through ACOG over at Homeland Security on to on how to get e-grants. Right now, the Army Corps of Engineer, and this is slightly off-topic, I know, so you can call me on point of order, has nineteen billion dollars in drainage funding that I wish we could put in for. But when our credibility is in question because we keep bringing stuff back and changing our minds and flip-flopping here and there, and we don't have plans in place for where the city's going and what we're doing, and they look at us and they look at our fire department, and we're asking for grant money for our fire department to get bunker gear or washers or whatever they need, air compressors, whatever they need. And they look and they say, oh, wait a minute, for a department your size, for a city your size, you don't have an Assistant Chief? Ding, points off your grant. Nope, sorry, you don't get money. So there's so many facets to this. But to say it's not needed is just so unfactual because when you have one person running all of the administration for an entire department because every other person that works there is on twenty-four hours, off forty-eight, on twenty-four, off forty-eight. So if they start administrative issue on Monday and they don't get it finished, they cannot touch it again until they come back on on, let's see, Monday, Thursday, because it's getting late at night. But it is ridiculous to keep bringing this back over and over again. It's come up twice. We've approved it twice. It just it I have no more words for it.
Here's why it's not ridiculous, because this is what I keep hearing from people who are calling me. They don't know why it was put back in. They need the money for streets and drainage. This is what people voted for. This was not the year to bring it back. We have a larger fire department. Can I can I please finish or do you?
Hold on, Mr. Dover.
I'm just saying.
Okay. We have a larger fire department than other cities of the same size. The reason that Chavino Park, according to you, is understaffed, and not exactly what Chief Riedel said, is because they have four EMS people. We do not. So.
Every one of us is certified for EMS, ma'am.
Yeah, we don't have EMS. We already know that.
We don't have an ambulance, no, ma'am.
Yeah. Okay, so that's that's the only reason. So we have a lot of needs, and we can't meet them all. And this and putting this in at the last minute, as was done, at basically a trick that was pulled by Ms. McLean saying that, oh, it was in our ordinance. She couldn't vote against it because she took an oath of office. So the solution is to change the ordinance. That's the solution.
Okay.
Call the question.
Okay, we had one person signed up that needs to speak, Mr. Paul. Make can you make a quick question? Has been called.
I think it's interesting. I could tell September eighteenth, when we had the budget meeting, and you folks had to go to the back in the executive meeting over this issue, and it was obvious that it had to move forward since it was in the ordinance. Well, I could tell right away that it was going to come back because it didn't fit what Ms. Winger wanted to do. Douglas is right. We didn't do anything about the Assistant Fire Chief prior to this last year. But Douglas forgets that nobody told us it was in the ordinance. Our city managers never said you got to do this because of the ordinance. Amy McLean dug into the ordinance for the budgets, looks at the different things. They found out. Douglas didn't know it was in the ordinance, let's be honest, or he would have said something, parlor con. He was on he's been on council fourteen years. He touts it all the time. But he didn't know it was been there. I did not know it was in there. If it was, we'd had this discussion a couple of years ago. The other interesting thing I find, so October ninth, it comes back. Now, when it came back, Leslie and Skip were the authors. Okay, it failed. Now it's coming back, and these two are the authors. Is that kind of a cross, excuse me? Is that kind of a cross-pollination? I I don't know. It sounds like it might be. Now, I realize there's a two or three words were changed or something like that. But yeah, you know, Skip stood up here many times and said, hey, JR and these girls, they could do a, no, they didn't. But you got three people right here that were involved in this whole thing. And I think to bring it back is like Ms. Glenn McLean said, is absolutely petty.
All right. Thank you. Stay on topic. Okay.
Uh, the question has been called for, so we're going to do a roll call vote on this one, getting rid of the Assistant Fire Chief.
No, getting rid of the ordinance and getting rid of the ordinance.
And defunding.
And defunding. Okay, as read and goes forward. Mr. McCormick, how do you vote?
No.
Yes.
All right. Okay. Passes three to two, I mean, it fails three to two to defund, so where do you go? Is it over?
We saw the consent agenda.
Oh, yeah. All right. Hang on. Hang on.
There's nothing else on.
We have the consent agenda.
Okay, we're bringing the consent agenda forward. A is approval of the city council minutes, regular city council. The city council items are subject regulatory by city council. Approval of the city council minutes, regular city council meeting, June the twelfth, two thousand eighteen. Budget workshop, July twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen. Budget workshop thirty, July thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. A special council meeting, August the thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Special council meeting, September eighteenth, two thousand eighteen. Accept the financial report and special fund balance reports ending September the thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Oh, we lost one. Okay. Accept the financial, we should make a note of that. Accept the financial report and special fund balance reports ending September the thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Accept the third quarter quarterly investment report. Consider and act upon resolution two oh one eight eleven thirteen, a resolution. The city of Castle Hills approving the two thousand eighteen certified tax roll.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to pull items A, one, two, three, four, and five to discuss a couple of changes that Mrs. Scott and I had provided that aren't included in the packet.
Mr. Mayor, I object to that, and I'd like to put that up for a vote as to whether it can be pulled. We've gone over this and over this and over this. They had a month, and now we're pulling it again. I object to that, and I request a.
No, I didn't say pull it pull it totally. I said pull it for consideration. We provided.
We provided them to do it.
See, we are we do not have our city secretary, right?
This isn't pulled for the.
It's not pulled to pull it.
It's pulled just to point something out, I think.
It's pulled for discussion.
Mr. McCormick, did you have anything you wanted to discuss on that? Douglas, did you have anything you want to discuss?
No.
Okay, all right, ladies.
Mayor, can I clarify?
Ms. Seeland?
Can I clarify something on, no? Okay, on the minutes, again, Ms. Scott and Ms. McLean provided some feedback into the modified the review of the minutes. They had some additions they would like to do and incorporate into the minutes. So again, we can add those tonight to approve these minutes or these sets of minutes as listed one, two, and three. So we just want to document those and get them over and done.
Most of them were spelling mistakes or names that were spelled wrong, but the big glaring error was on page nine of the September eighteenth minutes where it was written that I voted yes for the budget for next year, which eliminated positions that did not, in my opinion, need to be eliminated. And so on page nine, under the second action, Alderman McCormick moved to reconsider ordinance twenty eighteen dash oh eight dash one eight dash A, adopting the fiscal year two thousand nineteen operating budget as amended. Motion seconded by Alderman Gregory, roll call vote, McCormick, aye. Scott was listed as aye. McLean was listed as aye. Winger was listed as aye, and Gregory was listed as aye. Mrs. Scott and I did not vote for that, and it was a definite no, a nay, vote on the budget. And if nothing else is fixed, that needs to be fixed, please.
Can we put an amendment in for that so we can move this forward, ladies? And we can go back and do the spelling error.
I'll move to amend as described.
The October meeting?
No, sir, the September eighteenth. September eighteenth, page nine.
By the way, when you finish, Douglas, Mr. McCormick has put an item on the table to accept Ms. McLean's statement as a motion.
This is the option of the fiscal year operating budget as amended?
Yes, sir. I voted no, yes, sir.
I also voted no, sir.
Okay. That's an amendment to the thing. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Let's go ahead and move forward with the can we work on the spelling errors, Mark, without having to go through the whole darn thing?
I believe they've been submitted to the city manager, and the city manager has indicated that he will see that those changes are made.
And we can deal with that administratively.
I think it is critical to have corrected a an error in the minutes about how a council member voted, and that appears to have been taken care of, so it might be present it might be now in order to reconsider the consent agenda as a whole if there are no other items to be pulled for reconsideration.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, me too. So we have a we have a motion to to approve the consent agenda as amended. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, Ms. McLean, all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, council, finally. Okay, and then we're going to do announcements. Mr. Mr. McCormick, do you have any announcements?
Mr. Mayor, I've been advised that it doesn't say announcements from mayor and council, so we can't say anything.
Oh, come on.
Actually, announcements are on this.
Not by mayor and council.
I talked to the city manager. I mean, I talked to our attorney about this, and my the attorney paid council told us that because announcements is on this, I can read this off and then ask for council members' announcements. So lighting the lights on September these. What? Oh. Lighting the lights on Sep on Sunday, December second with sledding, ooh, that sounds fun, food trucks, and a visit from Santa. A special thank you to the Baker family who is providing the snowslide for sledding again this year. Also, thank you Judy Crawford, who has been working on the event and has secured a choir for the Christian School of Castle Hills for caroling, and over-the-top cakes for agreeing to have a cookie decorating booth for the kids and adults to decorate a holiday cookie. I've already told everybody about the Wi-Fi. Mr. McCormick, did you have any comments this evening or?
I just have one question for Mr. Rapley.
Go ahead.
Mr. Rapley, have I ever made an effort to control you or your activities?
Uh, no, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Mc Ms. Scott, do you have anything? Ms. McLean, do you have anything?
Yes, sir, I actually do. I have three things to report from the last Greater Bear County Council of Cities meeting that was on September nineteenth, the next one being tomorrow. There is a call-out for projects in two thousand nineteen for the MPO. So I'm sure that Mr. McCormick will be giving us updates on that, but next year is a year for call-out for projects. Beyond that, we will be expected to be putting some money in our budget to help the Census Bureau with the twenty twenty census. There is a whole program and process being put out by the Census Bureau requesting that local municipalities assist with making sure we have a very accurate census. And it includes educating early, having long and short forms. We've got to have some there's an education phase that starts at the end of this year through next year, awareness starting in April of next year, motivation that's in March through May of two thousand twenty, reminders that go out in the summer, and then kind of a thank you towards the end of the summer. So that is something that as a city will we we will be expected to be participating in to help the federal government. And of course, it will only help us when we go to look at funding for things that are population-based. Then the last risk report from the Greater Bear County Council of Cities meeting is that, if you haven't heard, Bear County is a non-attainment city. And so we basically have three years to obtain standards regarding emissions in our area. And so as a local municipality, we need to be looking at what effects or what we can do to help with that. Though we are small, we do have some things that we can do. So that's just a few updates.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Mr. Gregory, do you have any comments or anything?
Just want to wish Evli Moore happy birthday. She'll be a hundred and four in a week or two.
Who is that?
Evli Moore.
Again?
So stop by.
I thought you just had a birthday.
I thought it was I thought it was I was premature last month. It's about a week or ten days away, but a hundred and four, that means amazing.
Unbelievable.
And one other word, gobble gobble.
Thank you. Mr. McCormick, would you do the honors, please?
Much adjourned.
Thank you. Do I have a second? All in favor? Thank you very much.